Okay, tell me when everybody's in, Melanie.
Yep, everybody's in.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lucinda Collier, President of North Rose Wilkett School Board. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We'll call, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. A motion, please, to approve the agenda. Tina and Jason? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, great. I see you. The emotion is scary. Our first presentation is a high school student, Mr. Pauline. I'll let you do the introductions.
Thank you, Mrs. Collier. So you, you might recall earlier in the year, we started our student presentation with this fabulous young lady, Marin Lo Profito. I asked Mr. Bradley if he could arrange for Marin to come back so we could bookend our year with her. So I'm pretty proud of this young lady. She's committed to go to Robert Wesley in college where she will pursue nursing, I believe, in the, in the future. She's been one of our New Visions medical students. She's been a lead in our musical this year, You're in Town. She's somebody who's top notch when it comes to academics, when it comes down to her social interactions and just overall represents North Rose Wilkett in the best of ways. Had a chance to interact with her recently after her spring musical, or excuse me, spring music concert, Marin rejoined our instrumental music program after March and, you know, her and her classmates in the senior class of 2022 really added a nice touch to our musical program for their final concert. So that's just a testament to who she is as a young lady and who she is as a North Rose Wilkett student. I don't want to steal too much of her thunder, but I would like to just, you know, congratulate her on all she's accomplished. Thank her for being such a fine contributing member of our student body and let her know that we're really extremely proud of her and look forward to handing her her diploma next Friday night. Marin, do you want to take over from there, hon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pauline, for saying those kind words. So I just want to say a few things just from this year. So as he said, I was in the New Visions medical program this year and it was really great. I would say that anybody who wants to go into the medical field or is thinking about doing that, to do that program, because it is super helpful. Lots of hands-on experience. I got to go in and clinical at the hospital at Newark Wayne. And I got to see some super cool things, got to go and do surgeries and it was overall a really helpful program. And it gave me college credit too as well, which was nice. So I'd say anyone to do that program is by far the best thing I've done. So and then this year for senior class, we did a lot. We did a few, couple fundraisers, imprint coffee fundraiser. We just had our prom probably about a few weeks ago, three weeks ago, which was super nice. We had at the Caloka winery in Fairhaven, which was super nice. It was planned very well. And then what else did we do? And then, yes, I was in the musical for You're in Town. I think that went really well. Our director, Mrs. Schwinn, did an amazing job on just teaching us and directing us with the kind of short time that we had. So that was really nice. And yeah, I felt very honored to be a lead in the musical this year. And then, yeah, graduation is in a week, so I'm super excited about that and the rest of my classes. So, yeah, that's all I'd like to say.
We're glad you had such a good year and such a good experience at the hospital and in preparation for your future in college and preparation to be a nurse. That's marvelous. Board members, is there anything you would like to say to Marin? Jason?
Just wanted to congratulate Marin on her North Rose Wilkett career. I've watched her since she was quite small. And it's, it's really nice to see with a young adult that you've grown into, Marin. I wish you the best of luck in college and I can't wait to see you next Friday for graduation.
Thank you.
Yes, we're looking forward to graduation. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming back and it's nice to see, see you after the long year. And we do wish you all the best.
Thank you guys so much. Have a great rest of your night.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Marin.
Good. Mr. Pauline, would you like to introduce the directors?
Sure. So, you know, wrapping up our school year presentations with the director program tonight, you know, Bridget Barr, Sarah McLean, and Fred Prince will be doing their school improvement plans and kind of highlighting how the year has gone from each of their respective departments and what they've overseen. So I'm going to turn it over to Bridget and let her get it started.
Okay, I think we're ready. First, I'd just like to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to share progress that we've made towards fulfilling our community promises this year. Our first community promise focuses on partnerships. There we go, sorry. Our parent liaisons are the hub of partnerships between school, families, and our communities. Beyond providing information on school and community events and listening to parents, staff, and community feedback, our parent liaisons have been actively involved in creating positive experiences for our students, families, and staff. They coordinated and hosted several activities and parent-supported events for Teacher Appreciation Week and are actively communicating end of the school year events through Parent Square. The WEO and Steady Work programs are going strong. They enrage, they engage at-risk youth and work experiences to develop technical and soft skills in a safe environment while developing relationships with businesses in our communities. At this time, we currently have nine students who are participating in these programs on a consistent basis. As we know, there is a disparity of resources in our region. The district has partnered with various community-based organizations to overcome access barriers our students and families experience. Some of these partners included Wayne Behavioral Health Network, Family Counseling Services of the Finger Lakes, Delphi Rise, Scarlet Threads, Cornell Cooperative Extension, Wayne Pretrial, Wayne CAP, the Council on Alcohol and Addiction of the Finger Lakes, Literacy Volunteers, the Wayne County Department of Aging and Youth, and the Wayne Maximizing Out-of-School Time Organization. And these organizations have helped us really be that community school that can meet all of the needs of our students exactly where they are and help to provide some, you know, mental health support, literacy support, and enrichment opportunities for our students and families. When the pandemic hit, Wayne County partnered with FoodLink to provide food distributions to families in need. These distributions are still provided monthly in communities throughout the county. Recognizing that transportation can be a barrier to accessing this resource, we currently pick up and deliver boxes for 23 families each month, including seniors and McKinney-Vento families. We have various volunteers such as parent liaisons, retired staff, and the parents of students in our communities who assist with these deliveries. This year, through the Mental Health Awareness Training Grant, we were able to provide teen mental health first aid training, training to our high school students. This program helps students develop an understanding of mental health and signs of mental health disorders and how to assist their peers who may be experiencing distress. We had 74 students successfully complete the program and received certification in teen mental health first aid. Through the SRAE Grant and Optimal Health Grant, we've had the opportunity to provide seventh through eleventh grade students with two programs that support healthy relationships and communication skills in order to reduce relationship violence. 110 students in seventh and eighth grade were trained in Safe Gates and 98 students in ninth through 11th grade were trained in Love Notes. We also implemented Primary Project for the first time this year. And we had 11 early elementary students who worked with a specially-trained child associate on a regular basis. And they engaged in child-directed play-based activities so that they could develop skills such as expressing your feelings and problem solving. Our academic promise was to increase access to accelerated learning and enrichment opportunities and expand early exposure to the school environment. This fall, we were excited to open our three-year-old UPK half-day program so that we could provide some of that early exposure to our building, our programs, and our curriculum, but do that through a play-based learning. We had a full roster this year. We had nine in the morning class and nine in the afternoon class, and we are almost full for the fall. Through the New York State School Violence Prevention Grant and the BJA Stop Grant, we were able to expand the Alternative Learning Center to provide at-risk disengaged students with an integrated space that provided social-emotional learning as well as academic support in order to recover credits towards graduation. As of the most recent report that I've received, the ALC students have recovered 84 course credits to stay on path to graduation. And starting this summer, the ALC has rebranded itself and will go by Cougar Ops. That stands for Cougar Opportunities for Success, and I think it exactly sums up what happens in the, in that room. And this year, we were very excited to be able to return to in-person extracurricular opportunities through the 21st Century Grant. In order to count towards our attendance goal and therefore funding, students needed to participate in at least 15 hours of programming. Since July, we've had 193 elementary students, 165 middle school students, and 138 high school students meet this goal. And finally, strategically pursuing grants that match the goals and objectives of the district allows us to continue programming without depending on one source of funding. Now, we just talked about all the students who participated in the 21st Century Grant. That grant will expire on June 30th of this year. But through the process of rating multiple sources of income to support this out-of-school-time programming, we now have approximately $430,000 available each year for the next three years to continue to provide this critical academic support, enrichment programming, and youth development programming. So that is all that I have for tonight. I thank you again for the opportunity and I'll turn it over to Fred Prince, our Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, Bridget, and thank you, Board of Education members, for the chance to speak to you tonight. Can you go to the next slide, please? There we go. On May 11th, we participated in a teacher recruitment fair hosted by Harris Beach at their facility in Pittsburgh. There was a total of six Wayne County school districts that participated. We started that day with a meet and greet. The district created a trifold brochure, which you can see right now, which was shared with the candidates. We had an opportunity to speak with potential candidates about all the great things happening in our schools as well as our community, our values and goals, and our current and anticipated openings. Candidates were given the opportunity to sign up for same-day interview. We had 46 respondents to the advertisement. We had approximately 20 people attend the event in person. Sarah and I conducted seven interviews back-to-back. I would say by far, we were the busiest table there. Everyone who responded to the event but could not attend was emailed a trifold brochure and encouraged to visit our website to apply. Can you go to the next slide, please? These are a listing of current openings. As you can see, we are right now busy looking at, doing a lot of interviews. Our principals and our buildings are very busy with, with committees. So we ended up, from this teaching recruitment fair, we had six candidates apply for five of our open positions. We did have two candidates apply for the high school music position. Next slide, please. This year, we're introducing a student summer worker program. We're creating opportunities for up to nine of our high school students to work in our Buildings and Grounds Department at all three buildings. The cost of this program is being covered by a grant. Students will work seven hours a day for 30 days. We feel this is a direct give back to the community, both monetarily and by providing our students a safe place to spend the summer. Our students will have an opportunity to gain real-world experience, earn, and hopefully save some money as well as improve non-cognitive skills such as time management, perseverance, and self-confidence. Next slide, please. To be considered, students will need working papers. If they're under 18 years of age, they will successfully complete a Wayne County Civil Service application, obtain three references from teachers, and be interviewed. These opportunities are being advertised during the high school morning announcements. These will be actual appointments through the Civil Service with the county, with students having the opportunity to join the New York State Retirement System as well. Next slide, please. Students will be assigned to cleaning tasks, moving furniture, painting, and grounds maintenance tasks. They will be allowed to use handheld tools, but will not be allowed to drive any piece of equipment. They will work under the supervision of the head custodian or principal of the building to which they are assigned. At this point, I will turn it over to Sarah McLean for her part.
Good evening, everyone. I want to just echo Bridget's sentiments and thank the board for the opportunity to share about the Special Education and Pupil Services Department. Mel, can you do the next slide? So as far as partnerships, we have had students in this, in the picture we'll show, participate in FLX Works. We also have students in our special class 1211 working on a bench that will be placed out in the community for our community to enjoy and utilize. We also have several students working at Wayne ARC this year, as well as the NRW High School cafeteria to give them some real-world life experiences, both in and outside of our community. As far as equity, we completed our targeted skills group for NISA. So people, so if you're not sure what NISA is, NISA is the alternative to the New York State assessments. So our students in our special class settings at the middle school and high school participate this instead of state exams. And this is a different graduation pathway. So students who participate in these exams are not eligible for a region's diploma. So we take these decisions very seriously. And so, as we talked about before, we were identified as a district who exceeded the 1% cap for having students participate in the NISA assessments. What we did learn through that whole process is that we are not over-identifying students. We just happen to have a much smaller cohort of Gen Ed students. And so that is what, where that formula comes from. And so because our Gen Ed population is smaller and especially when students opt out of taking state assessments, that can impact our overall percentage. Although the number of students that were taking the assessment has not changed. But it did give us a really important opportunity to review what the criteria is to be eligible for NISA to ensure that we aren't over-identifying students and aren't over-using that pathway. We also have been able to offer in-person meetings for CSE meetings and parent-teacher conferences, especially as some of our COVID protocols have been lifted. So we've been able to provide equitable access to our parents who English might not be their first language. So we've had ASL providers, Spanish interpreters, and Haitian Creole interpreters come in to be able to allow our families and their, and students to participate in their CSE meetings and parent-teacher conferences. As far as social-emotional, the Special Olympics was back this year. Our special class students, seven through 12, participated in the Special Olympics at SOTUS. Because SOTUS has been planning this for a while, a lot of the COVID protocols were still in place. So they asked that our students, the younger students, stay back this year. So you can see in the, the picture, Mrs. Parkinson's class did her own Special Olympics right at the elementary school. But then our older students were able to go and participate. And it truly was, you know, one of those opportunities to see kids work so hard and be so proud of themselves and the display of sportsmanship and just overall, just so happy to be there, really, truly was an amazing thing to see and something we should all be able to experience with, especially with all the negative things that are going on. And I will, you know, make sure that I acknowledge Kathy LaValle and Mike Grasso and Jackie Nelson, who really kind of coordinated in getting everything together for our students to participate and held after-school training sessions to ensure that our students were prepared to show their skills to the other districts in our area. As far as academic, this year, we were able to offer IEP training to teachers. So eight teachers participated in that training after school. And the purpose of that training is to make sure that we are writing compliant and high-quality IEPs for our students. We'll be offering that training again over the summer to allow more teachers to have access to that training. We're also looking to build some consistency, K-12, with writing our IEPs to ensure that everyone has the same knowledge and that for parents who have children in multiple building or for when children go from building to building, they're seeing consistency in those IEPs. We also have had our MTSS coaches attend the Regional MTSS Roundtable, which is other districts in the area send their MTSS coaches to be able to share ideas, problem-solve, brainstorm together, and then bring those ideas back to help improve our MTSS process. And lastly, our students who are English-language learners participate in the NISA slot testing this spring to determine the progress that they've made. So we have about 30 students participate in that and we're looking forward to the test results that will come hopefully, hopefully early fall. And last, but certainly not least, financial. So this year, one of our goals was really to make sure that we were using our funding and being very fiscally responsible, but also kind of sharing responsibility of funding between the buildings and the Special Education Department. And in doing so, we were able to order necessarily curriculum, necessary curriculum for our special class setting, which is the collaborative classroom that's utilized at the elementary buildings. We're able to order that for our special class setting to, again, keep that rigor up for those students. And we're also able to order some flexible seating and sensory options for other special education students in the district. And lastly, when I reported last time, we talked about Medicaid. So I have some updated numbers. I actually got a, an email right before this. It was like, make sure you share this with your board, because I told them we were meeting. And we have now claimed $185,000 for this school year. And we still have, I think, two months of claiming to do. And then we've been paid so far $61,000, which is up significantly from last year. And this says we should be in the range of 150,000 to 170,000. But after my meeting with our, the company that oversees our Medicaid, she said we really can be even closer to 170,000 to 190,000 based on the work that we're doing. And a lot of that goes to Chelsea Palmer, who's our secretary in the CSE office, and Gary, who also helps get all of our paperwork submitted so that we can be reimbursed for those services that we're providing. Any questions for me? Sorry.
It's a very comprehensive report overall from, from all of you. And it's good to see all that's going on. There's certainly a great deal that you're, you're accomplishing. Thank you so much. Any board members? You have anything they want to respond? Jason?
Yeah, thank you for such a detailed report. The only question that I had was the Medicaid reimbursement, what's that reimburse us for?
So any special education student who receives Medicaid, if they receive related services, we're able to bill Medicaid to be reimbursed for those related services that we provide and related services like OTPT speech. So we ask all, all families to sign the paperwork that allows us to do that. Not all families and not all students that we service receive Medicaid, but those that do, then that allows us to be able to bill Medicaid and be reimbursed for providing those services here at school.
Thank you.
Sure.
I, I was pretty impressed the way all of the departments or the head, the administrator heads are working together. That's not something we've seen before and it really makes a huge difference. That's great to see.
John?
Oh, the impact on our community is immense, from the kids who are working in the summer, the, the actual work done, but it's also the experiences they're getting. The people who take advantage of the food that's given, especially in the last couple of years with the COVID problems that we've had. And then our economy has not been great because of that. And then the, this, you know, the the educational programs that are going along with all of that, with mental health. And it's just a wonderful thing to see. And it's all put together in a couple of minutes' time, but it's expansive throughout the entire community. Thank you very much for coordinating.
Linda?
It is exciting. And I think one thing that we're all aware of too as board members is how much of this has been dependent on grant money and finding other grants to, you know, continue to cover. It's, we are really working for all the advantages we can get, and I think we can be proud of everyone's efforts.
Thank you. Paul?
I had a question for Mr. Prince. When, when the students are required to have working papers, is this something that's easy to get? I, I can't remember. Are, are we helping them do that?
Yes, actually, the high school office will issue the working papers for the students.
Great. Well, thank you so much for those reports and we look forward to seeing more wonderful things happen in the future. Thank you so much. Before we move on to the reports from our building liaisons, I was remiss when I began the meeting in that we have a very important visitor with us tonight, and I failed to introduce her. Dr. Vicki Remus is here, Superintendent of our BOCES, Wayne Finger Lakes. And she's with us. And Vicki, we're really happy to have you with us again. Hello.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for, for letting me attend your meeting tonight.
Welcome. We'll move on to the building liaisons, starting with the elementary. Isetta, do you have anything to report tonight?
Yep, I even got unmuted. These reports could include a couple of, a couple of bumps, because last bump, we didn't have one. I didn't have one for you. And we're going to start with the Booster Club Book Fair. And over $1,700 in free books were available to the school because of the success of our book fair. Over 850 profit was made by the North Rose Boot, for the North Rose Booster Club. Due to the generous donations of the North Rose Wilkett Elementary staff and the Booster Club, this elementary was able to give away 102 books to children who did not get the chance to buy one, which is fantastic. Thank you to the, thank you to Angelique Durham, Bobby Joe Mendenhall, and the Booster Club for the help with the event. It was very successful. And they are looking forward to many more events, including the Memorial Day Parade, which unfortunately was rained out again and they had to do in the gym, but the kids had a wonderful time. We also had the Festival of the Arts for the UPK through the fourth grade. I attended the UPK through one. It was wonderful. And I am hearing that the older kids, the second through fourth, was just as well-attended and enjoyed by all. Graduations will be coming up soon. The UPK graduation is June 22nd. And the elementary Moving Up Day is going to be June 23rd. And we congratulate all the kids who are moving up and graduating this year. It's been a wonderful year and a very stressful one for some of our kids. So it's been, been enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John, do you have something from the middle school?
Well, the end of the year at the middle school is always unique in that they're going to have their annual dinner and talent show, which has been going on for 30-plus years now. The little twist this year is that the Salt Box Smokehouse will be catering it. And one of the owners of that is a North Rose Wilkett alumni, which is nice to, when you walk in to see her. Mini Olympics will be happening on the 17th. Hopefully, the weather is good. They did have their junior National Honor Society was this week, their induction. And not so much that they And uh not so much that the kids will enjoy, but they're looking, working on a final exam schedule and trying to polish it off a little bit, uh especially for next year's youth uh based on curriculum maps. So the end of the year is the hectic at that place.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah.
And Linda, do you have anything from the high school?
Uh, yes, actually this week uh high school had its athletic awards program on Tuesday evening. And that was uh well attended. It was great to see how many students were recognized for their efforts, for uh their achievements athletically, but also for their sportsmanship. A majority of all of our teams throughout the year are scholar athlete teams where they uh the members of the teams have averages above ninety, which is something to be very proud of. There seem, and there certainly was a lot of great energy and that comes with the end of the year and approaching graduation, which we know will be a week from Friday. So all good things going at the high school.
Yes, thank you very much. Do you have anything you want to report from uh the four county?
Well, we all attended the annual meeting and had several dignitaries from the state ed and regional representatives. Um, and as we all know, there was quite a bit said and, and of course, maybe not all of us were aware of the fact, but we did not get through all of the questions because as sometimes happens, people were a little bit longer and they're more uh took a little bit more time answering some of the things than anticipated. But uh I know the legislative committee really is making an effort to try to get better communication from that level with schools in our area and we're going to continue to pursue that. Maybe with a little bit more detailed information coming our way next time.
Thank you. Uh, John, do you have anything on the district uh safety committee?
Yes, it was a very active meeting, uh especially after the um unfortunate shootings in Buffalo and uh Texas. But it was a regular scheduled agenda that was established ahead of time. Uh, but they had a, a person who spoke from the Rochester Threat Advisory Committee. And uh they are devoted to um, there are twenty-seven different stakeholders in that group with resources uh dedicated to closing threat management and providing guidance. Uh, and, and I was amazed that the people or the agencies, there are all colleges in the area, Monroe County and um FBI, the Secret Service, uh Kodak, uh Veterans Outreach and even Wegmans. And then that surprised me that Wegmans has a security uh agency incorporated in their corporate pow, in their corporate structure. Uh, and they're quite active and quite good. Uh, they basically uh don't profile people, they profile behaviors. And then they try to work on what they see from the behaviors and try to modify potential terrorism or bad acting, shall we say. Uh, we also are uh in the, had, there, there's also a, a small part having to do with the TAP app security, uh which is something that the regional uh schools are thinking about joining or buying into. That's for s- security. So it was very active meeting and very, uh, very well done. I'm very impressed with what I hear goes on at that meeting. It's a uh, it, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. And, and it's too bad it's so critical now that we must have a security committee. Uh, but I, I feel better about having it and the things they talk about and the level of expertise that's there. Uh, it's a necessity now. So the clap, the clap of the hands to all those people involved.
Thank you. Paul, is there anything you want to report from policy?
Nothing earth-shattering tonight. Uh, our policy committee will continue though. I look forward to another onslaught of, of uh reviews and updates. But through everything that began with, that had a date to begin with the nineteen and we're now in the next decade from that, twenty-two uh through twenty-ten, uh lots of work ahead.
Good. We'll move on to the superintendent's update. You'll notice there is a little bit of a uh change in the, the order of our usual agenda. Uh, but that is to accommodate some of the special things that we want to do or talk about tonight. So Michael, you're on.
Thank you again, Mrs. Collier. So you might have heard in Sarah's presentation, the, the work that Kathy LaValley and her students have uh contributed to our, our high school and our community. The bench that she referenced from her caring cougars program, um, you'll see the picture on the left is what the condition was when she received it. And the condition on the right is what it is currently. So Mrs. LaValley's program, um, you know, is basically the functional life skills program and they do so much to contribute positively to our, our school culture and our community culture. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize them and let Mrs. LaValley and her class know. Um, I will be providing a plaque for them to place upon that bench so that wherever it's decided that thing goes, people can celebrate the hard work and effort from those young children uh or excuse me, those young students and, and the many con- positive contributions that um they've provided as well. So um, Mrs. LaValley, um, Mrs. Poole and the team of people that work wi- within her program. I know I'm uh forgetting Mrs. Lasher as well, but so much goes on in that program to provide positivity. As Sarah had said, in a time in our society where we need some rays of sunshine, she and her program certainly provide that. So that bench will get put to good use, I'm certain. Um, but we wanted to start with that and recognize uh those students. Megan? So I also, you know, we, we oftentimes rec- recognize our, our school administration. Um, and you heard a fantastic presentation tonight by several of our directors. I want to just take a moment to, to commend the class advisors and staff members for all the year-end events. I want to thank the building administration for the time and effort they've put into bringing normalcy back to this time of year. And I, in particular, want to thank Mr. Blankenberg. You know, he had a, quite a busy spring season for rescheduling at the start when we were dealing with snowflakes and rainfall and trying to reschedule things. Um, wrapped up our athletic season just about a week and a half ago and then right into the award season. So had a chance to participate in his high school athletic awards the other night that Mrs. Agner referenced and Mark does a fantastic job representing our, our athletic side of things, you know? He will com- constantly reference the student athletes. And the one thing that I would say is we're, we're doing things to a particular standard. And our coaches see that, our student athletes see that, and certainly our, our community sees that. So kudos to Mr. Blankenberg on that. And lastly, just want to remind people in the communities, the next Friday night, um, June seventeenth, six o'clock soccer field, our high school commencement will take place. And we're looking forward to that ac- activity. Um, next, Megan? So from my point of view individually, and I know as a representative of a school district, I want to thank Mrs. Isetta Younglove. She has served our North Rose Wilkett School Board since twenty-fourteen. Uh, she wraps up her, her second, um, or actually her, her term on June thirtieth. I believe it's the, the second full term she's completed and she finished a partial as well. So appreciative of her and so appreciative of her efforts. You know, it's, it's certainly known to people here who participate in our Board of Education meetings that she's a tireless advocate for students with disabilities. Um, and when it comes down to equity and, and being a champion for all, she certainly has done a fantastic job for that. Or with that as well. Megan? So, Mrs. Collier, um, I'm not sure if you want to read the proclamation right there?
Absolutely. Proclamation of service. Whereas North Rose Wilkett Board of Education member Isetta Younglove has served on the board for eight years. And whereas through Isetta's dedicated service, has displayed character, integrity and a commitment to education, now therefore be it resolved that the North Rose Wilkett Board of Education hereby congratulates Isetta Younglove for the representation she has provided for North Rose Wilkett School District and community. Well done, Isetta. And the, and there is a plaque that will be presented to you, Isetta, when we see you in person. The plaque says, North Rose Wilkett Board of Education, Board of Education Member, Isetta Younglove, two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty-two, in recognition of your dedication to the students, staff and community of North Rose Wilkett Central School District. Isetta, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words? Do you want us to keep moving on?
I don't know what to say. I, I wasn't expecting it. I, I guess I just want to say thank you for all the support and thank you for the parents for giving me the chance. Just thank you. I'm, I'm overwhelmed.
Normally, normally the board would take a break right now and we'd have cake and ice cream. Um, but I'm afraid we can't do that in this virtual world of ours. Uh, but Isetta, we certainly do celebrate your time on the board and thank you so much. We're going to miss you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Megan, if you don't mind, um, just to wrap up, you know, Mrs. Collier, you referenced Dr. Ramos being with us tonight. She's a multitasker, to say the least. Um, she's in, in her car on the way to a very important event. And, you know, she just wanted to extend her gratitude and appreciation to North Rose Wilkett Board of Education and the administration for being present last week at the uh four county Board of Education meeting or four county, four county boards meeting, rather, excuse me, where we listened to the Commissioner of Education and the Chancellor for the Board of Regents. And then also Isetta, she wanted to extend her appreciation to you for serving as a Board of Education member and prior to that, being a parent advocate in the arena of special ed. I know she's with us and Dr. Ramos, if you want to say something else, um, by all means, you can jump in and, and participate at this point, but I did want to make sure our board and our community knew um that those two pieces were things that you very much wanted to share tonight.
Thank you so much, Mike. You know, when we, when we, when I started this meeting, I really felt like Mother Hen, you know, because you're seeing so many great things happening. And we're all in a collaborative task, but in, as I was thinking and, and thinking of your comments of how gracious and happy you are with so many things going on, it's not by accident, folks. It starts with a great board. It starts with a board that supports their superintendent and believes in their vision. And because of your trust in his leadership and because of your collaborativeness and because of your courageous team spirit, um, you're starting to see and you're seeing tonight and all the other times, um, all these great things that are happening. But more than anything, Isetta, thank you so much for your dedication and your time and your support. And um I just wanted to, to say a big thank you to all of you and to say what an honor it is to have such a great board in our region. So thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Collier, that's it for my part.
All right, thank you. The, uh, the board also tonight uh has a, a couple of recognitions that they would like to present. Besides saying goodbye to Isetta, um, we want to give a big thank you to the whole staff um of the North Rose Wilkett Central School System um for the, for the amazing uh work you have demonstrated over the last two years with this whole COVID uh problem. Um, with the COVID epidemic demands affecting not only our students and their families, but also the staff themselves and their own families. Their job duties and the way of working of our entire staff changed. Some had to take on new and additional responsibilities. Many had to learn new protocols and all had to deal with the ever-changing regulatory procedures. Our staff implemented student-at-home learning with online instruction, established student internet access, issued and maintained student computers, distributed academic materials, prepared and delivered home meals and provided many extra services needed to help students and families. This year, with most of our students back in school, school staff did their best to provide students with as normal a school experience as possible and helped students re-acclimate to being in school again. They also had to comply with COVID recu- regulations by adapting students' proximity to one another, cope with student and staff quarantine-related absences, enforce the New York State mandate, mask mandates, and be understanding of parents' worries and sometimes anger over regulations imposed on their children. In all, it was a very stressful year this year as well as last year. So tonight, the board thanks the entire North Rose Wilkett School Staff for their caring, their responsiveness and their resiliency throughout the COVID epidemic. We truly appreciate all you've done for our students. A big thank you from the board. And the other recognition that we want to make um is recognizing Mr. Michael Pollan. Um, we're not sure that, that the community and maybe a lot of the staff realize all that he's done, put to, over these two years. So tonight, we want to give special recognition to Mr. Pollan, our school superintendent. He's strongly committed to making North Rose Wilkett the best it can be for our students and community. He's an effective leader with high expectations, values team input, appreciates individual resourcefulness and requires accountability. He also identifies with our rural school district. He understands the life experience advantage and disadvantages of our residents. And he realizes the importance of the school to the community. Throughout the COVID crisis, Mr. Pollan has just demonstrated exceptional leadership. He anticipated students, student and staff needs. He effectively adjusted procedures to meet ever-changing regulations. He implemented so- solutions to student and family problems. He dealt with countless details and issues and managed the financial impact on the district. At the same time, he continued to keep focus on student academic learning and social, mental and physical well-being, staff effectiveness and professional development. And he implemented, implemented innovative programs and essential student services. He attended to the maintenance of our buildings and grounds, the safety of students and sta- staff and, and the strategic oversight of capital projects. He has served our district well. At this time, individual board members would like to acknowledge Mr. Pollan in some particular in some particular areas. John, we'll start with you.
Academic construction and student achievement. I full well know that a superintendent of schools sets a direction. A superintendent never does everything alone. And if they think they can, they're very upset when they can't. They set direction and they work as a team with their administrators and teachers and staff. I especially liked the two years we were out of school with home instruction. He sensed and read up on knowing that we should have a program for kids when they came back into the school system because of they're not used to rules and regulations and the way of doing the procedures. So, he brought in a group that would help the staff and the students acclimate to coming back to school. He's managed staff shortages. He adjusted, he helped adjust for remote and in-person learning situations at the same time they were going on. He's created some positions that are very important for coaching as well as reading and tutoring. He's created a lot of those positions that are necessary in this day and age. I believe he made North Rose Wilkett ahead of the curve in planning for effective school and home instruction at the start of the pandemic. I think we were ahead of many, many districts in the region. And I think our kids profited from that. He has given encouragement to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and given her backing, encouragement for the mapping program for training and supervision. That's super important for our kids. Approved the BOSI's purchase of student computers and hotspots as needed for instruction during the last couple of years. One of the biggest things is the encouragement of expansion of the high school learning center, which has now changed the name, but it's still going to be there for credit recovery. So, the high school students can really benefit from that. There has been a number of new courses set up, geotech in the high school, as well as a well-needed driver's education course and global history and geography and honors course for our high school. He has also supported our summer school program for North Rose Wilkett students only so that we can give attention to the kids that we know best and supported summer curriculum development by our staff. Curriculum maps were completed, which is essential for the long-range education of our kids. And he has also facilitated in reporting a standardized and state test to their school board so that we're aware of what's going on in our district. As a team effort, I think he's done a great job.
Thank you. Linda Egner?
Yes, I wanted to speak to the effectiveness of our superintendent as a communicator with staff, students, school board, and community. He certainly has done an outstanding job of being very visible in the community, engaging with different groups and service groups. And we all know how much he enjoys meeting new people and getting to know them and interacting with them. I think one of the things that we've seen him really do a superior job of is connecting with students in every building, too. We've seen him get to know students and then follow them throughout the year and report a little bit on their progress and maybe shenanigans, too, as well, because he gets to know them so well and connect with them. He has supported staff development and individual staff members. He has made such an effort to keep everyone not only up to date, but explain what is going on, maybe sometimes why and how it's going on, which is so helpful to everyone in the staff and the school board especially. It's greatly appreciated by each of us.
Thank you. Isetta?
There I am. I'd like to speak to the financial accountability. I've done finance all my life at government levels and school is no different than the rest. It all has its own individual little nicks and crannies. And I would like to express how nicely it has been to work with him and not be talked down to, to have it presented on a level that we all can understand. Apples are apples. You don't necessarily need to know a brand, but you do want to know an apple is an apple. And I think he's done very well at making sure the board understands that. He's handled the audits and meeting regulations. He's done very well with the business office, helping them to work with new programs, not necessarily programs, but new ways to present the same stuff they've been doing, but in a better way. He's implemented a budget that was informative and very, very current. You could follow it very easily. And I think because of that, it leads a lot to having a budget approved, having people understand it, not talk down to about it, but understanding what you're presenting and what you're doing. I think the community understands that, too. He's worked very well at training the board to understand just exactly what is involved in a budget and how it works and not giving fancy line item names to it. What it is is what it is. He's done well. He come into quite a project with our capital projects. And he went in headfirst and has done an excellent job getting up to date, keeping us up to date, and completing a project that seemed to go on forever, as the community knows. He recognized, he saw a reorganization. Not easy for me to say. He saw a reorganization of the business office. And that quite office isn't easy either. People kind of get stuck in their ways. And understanding that and being able to move it forward is a process. And working with the New York State Comptroller's Office, which I have done in the past, in an extensive audit, was done very well as well. All for the last two years, he's hit the ground running and done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you, Lucinda. I'd just like to circle back to the staff quick. I'd like to thank our entire staff for enduring what has been another unusual year due to regulations and mandates. It seemed like there was a new obstacle at every turn. But like rock stars, everyone rose to the occasion. I really appreciate everything that you guys do. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Pollan on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Michael hit the ground running in respect to this committee. It has been evident that Michael has a lot of cougar pride. During a time of our Buildings and Grounds, or during a time that our Buildings and Grounds Department was short-staffed, he regularly stepped in to get things done, like mowing, even on weekends. His goal of protecting the assets of the district in the best possible way has been quite evident. After our first facilities tour, Michael and his team built a plan to address the needs of our district in both the short and long terms. Michael has also initiated an inventory process to protect districts' tools and equipment. He understands that dollars spent to replace lost or stolen equipment are dollars that can't be spent on students. Finally, I'd like to point out his willingness to collaborate and have an open mind. It has been nice. Our district is better and our taxpayers are protected more because of the focus he has put on Buildings and Grounds. Finally, I'd like to point out his focus on maintaining positive relations with the Board of Education and staff alike. He has mended fractured relationships and built new ones. It's been a pleasure working with him during the very trying two years. And I'm proud to call him our district superintendent.
Thank you. Paul?
Everyone on the board and all of our community members will recall that one of the requirements for a superintendent, when we were looking for a new superintendent, was we wanted that individual to be present. We wanted the community to know who it was. We wanted our school to know who it was. And Mr. Pollan has risen to the occasion in a wonderful manner. As Linda said, not only do all our teachers know him, but our students know who he is. He's attended so many school events, the anything musical, the arts, all our sports. He's just been fabulous to be out there in person and cheering a song. Regarding the community, specifically, Linda mentioned a couple of the organizations. He's met with our Rotary Club. He's met with Forever Young. And something that I've really been pushing, and he has met with our town superintendents more than once, town supervisors more than once. So, I'm really pleased at that. Community events, just last week, I saw him at our Wilkett Memorial Day ceremony. So, he's been out in the community. And that's why we were so, we were demanding that. And he's, again, risen to the occasion. He's also been excellent with the media, you know, there are Lakeshore News and Dan DeRocher. So, he's been very forthcoming and is always available. In fact, one of the things, that's what he likes to say, is, hey, talk to me. I'm available. I'll make time for you. So, I'd just like to congratulate Mike that you've done a great job. Keep charging.
And Tina?
Okay, I had the management section. Mike has really brought a new and more consistent style of management to the district. It's something that we needed. He recognized it and he went gung ho with it. He's been very diligent at all levels. The COVID crisis has required creative and on-spot practices to effectively deal with the issues. It forced on us and he was ready. He was prepared. He was flexible and willing to look at other ideas. He didn't only operate on what he thought was right. He sought out advice from others and was able to collaborate and use that effectively in developing an approach that enabled our staff and our students to be in school when it was most important for them to be there. We're in great shape and the such practices have been maintained and other districts have used them as well. And that means something. It's something we've always had a pride in being. And that kind of reputation for us has been restored. And I think that's really helpful for us. It's helpful for him. He was also pretty effective in dealing with the Department of Health, and I don't think that's an easy feat in any way. The district had some weak areas that he was able to come in, look at, and effectively put into practice new procedures that are going to set us ahead and will prevent any kind of difficulties that we had before, such as the use of benefits. Our equipment is, Jason, kind of related to already. And maintenance in terms of some of that, staff changes and shortages. He's been on top of that. He's not afraid to make that difficult call. He's not afraid to offer the kind of criticism that people need that he's able to make it be helpful so that they're able to move on and have positive effect from it. So, we now have some good management pieces in place that I think will be helpful to us. His recruitment of new staff, he was instrumental in us going to the job fair or being part of that job fair that was done in Rochester. He networks. He uses his old contacts and is able to help us with them. He's also, again, created a reputation that encourages people to want to seek employment at North Rose Wilkett. And I think that's a real plus for us. He's been highly involved in supervising administrative and staff, offering support and assisting in areas of weaknesses. I kind of touched on that before, but I think it's bigger than what I was saying. You know, he's been able to offer the guidance so that administrators and teachers as well, or any support staff are really, where they have a good fit and are going to be helpful to our students and helpful to fellow staff as well as the district in general. He's highly effective in communicating at all levels. I think that's something we've all really touched on. You know, it's been a nice two years with Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm often asked by the public, what does a superintendent do? You know, he sits there in the district. He's got all these people working for him. What does he do? Now, you know. You've heard the rest of the story. Mike, we are so appreciative of all you've done here at Wilkett, North Rose Wilkett, in these two years that you've been here. And we did this tonight because we want the whole world to know all that you have done and how grateful we are that you're with us. So, tonight, we intentionally say and gratefully say, "Thank you and well done." Well done. And we hope you're not embarrassed by all the kudos, but you deserve them.
I hope he isn't embarrassed.
So, keep it up. We have great expectations.
Thank you very much. It's very humbling to have so many positive things said in such a short amount of time. So, I appreciate it. As you know, it is a team effort. I'm very, very fortunate to have a board that works with the same vision, the same direction, and an administrative team, a teaching staff, a support staff, a maintenance team, a transportation department. So many layers of our organization want the same things for our children, and that's really helpful. And, you know, she's on here tonight and you know what my appreciation for Dr. Ramos is and what a mentor she's been and some of my colleagues in neighboring districts, what they've meant to me and my success. So, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You're very welcome. We appreciate it, too. At this time, the board will be going into executive session. We will be coming back to do business because we do have the consent, we do have the consent agenda to attend to and the rest of the agenda. We think maybe around 45 minutes, Mr. Pollan? So, if you will all sign off, we will go on about the business of getting into executive session. Is there a motion, please, to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of specific employees? Isetta and Tina? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried.
Okay, I'm going to shut off the recording and get out of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second.
See you in a while.
Yep. Okay, we're good.
Thank you. We have just, what, two people who've come back in to us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We are back in regular session. And we're ready for number nine on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Linda and Paul? Any discussion? This goes through page seven. It's a long.
Lucinda, before we go to the consent agenda, public access to the board?
Oh, dear. You're right.
There's no one.
Perfect.
All right. Then, you can tell I'm tired. I worked with fourth graders from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock today. I forgot how tiring it is working with kids. And they were wonderful. I can't tell you how wonderful they were. So, page one through page seven. And any discussion? We have a motion on the floor. It was, I forgot who.
Linda and Paul.
Linda and Paul, okay. Any discussion? Then, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. And we... And we move over to good news. Any good news? Paul?
You know, there's really so much good news. We've, we've covered some of it tonight, but
Well, we can't cover it all.
Yeah, you just can't do it justice. I'll, I'll get a couple here. North Rose graduate from Bob Jones University, Aaron Hertz of Hoots, I think that is, of North Rose. He graduated the something of clay. I've forgotten what it is now. At Anadaga Community College, we had students with items displayed, specifically Grace King and Darian Young, Damian Young, I'm sorry. So, you know, at a college event. We've already talked about the Special Olympics. Mike, you highlighted it, and there's a photo of our students at SOTUS. Lots of good coverage in sports of, of, that was Clayton Reed. Gabriel Shetfield is named the Wilkett Rotary Student of the Month for April. I think we've already got one for May. I don't have it in front of me. And of course, you know about the baseball team. We've, some, Linda, you mentioned that, I think it was Linda that mentioned that we had so many scholar athlete teams. Actually, I want to, I want to piggyback on that. Of all the teams that we had, which I think are twenty-four, we only had four which weren't scholar athlete teams. And each one of those teams had an eighty-nine something. It just, you know, it's like, come on, can't you round it up? You know, it was so close that every one of our teams, just think about that. We had the tennis, we had tennis, a couple, what do you call it, doubles. Win the sectionals and go on to state. That was J.J. Wanek and Mike, can you help me?
Duro. Mr. Duro.
Zach Reed, Drew?
I, or Drew, yeah, I believe it is Zach Drew, wasn't it? Or what, actually, no. It was, oh, great, the.
I got it. I got it. Lucas Crane.
Lucas Crane, yes. Zach was for something else.
Yeah, and then yeah, Clayton Reed went on to sectional champs and discuss, won the sectional, so sorry, and went on to state and, and discuss. And, and I just got to take a minute to tell you about the, the baseball team at our loss, which I'm telling you was a win for our district. I really mean that. We went to Aquinas. We, two by two, walked on the field. Aquinas was, was, you know, allegedly going to slaughter us. They had been playing different teams, and even the SOTUS coach said, oh, you're not going to have any trouble at North Rose Wilkett. We marched on the field. We, we took our practice. We came out. We scored the first run in the first inning. We held them nose to nose for five innings. I'm telling you, they were scared. The minute we threatened in the fifth inning, they pulled a pitcher, put another pitcher in. They went on to win, and the score was six to one, but it's not indicative of how well we played. My point is, this district, our district, earned respect that day from, from not just Aquinas, but from around the, I think both Monroe County and Wayne County. We put on a great performance that the, there was no arguments. No one was throwing a helmet. No one was upset. The team was hugging each other at the end of the game for how well, what a great season we had. So I think it was just indicative of the, the, the manner in which our whole district is, is rising up and, and becoming well-respected.
When a team has, shows good sportsmanship and, and good ability to work together, it's really a tribute to the coaches.
Yeah, I should mention one other thing. I'm not sure everyone knows, but Coach Kepcinski was selected the Wayne County Coach of the Year. Do you know, did, are you aware of that? Yeah, another great kudo for our district.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. John?
I saw on Facebook yesterday or today, our eighth grade social studies class, they were reading a biography of a veteran, a World War II veteran, and they showed the digital timeline in their hallway. I thought it was a superb, I didn't hear the whole lesson, but it was a superb idea of real life on the D-Day anniversary. Great lesson.
Yeah, I'll say.
Just so he doesn't have to do it himself, I'd like to congratulate Paul and the other coaches for the varsity baseball team. Twelve years it's been since we won leagues, and I know that his whole group of coaches have had the goal of improving our baseball program, and I think that they're doing a really good job of it. So I appreciate all of them.
Thank you, Jason. Absolutely. All right. We're close to adjournment. I had asked you all to send me some dates of when we could have our, our lunch together, our dinner together. Would you please do that? John, you sent me dates, but you didn't include, you included the twenty-seventh, but not the rest of the week, or was that just open?
No. I thought I said, I thought I gave you the whole thing.
Well.
I'll resend.
Read it right.
I'll resend.
But we are talking about dinner after five o'clock. Not to do any business, just to enjoy each other and to have one last time together with Isetta in person. So do send me that, please. Is there any, we've come to the end of our agenda. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Tina and.
Isetta should.
Isetta, okay.
Isetta.
Well, let's let Isetta take the motion. Isetta will adjourn, and Tina, thank you for a second, okay? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Good night, all.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.